Seeing folks come back. All right, I think we have everybody here. Yep, all right. Back. So, good evening, everybody. Council's just returning from closed session. There's no reportable action tonight. Came out of the closed session. So now, we are going to move forward with our regular open city council meeting. So just a quick reminder, tonight's council meeting is being conducted via teleconference during the proclaimed state of emergency. We encourage participation from all community members and ways to participate and engage with council are outlined in the agenda. Okay, so then, Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Protem Vega, excuse me. Councilmember Fernandez?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia-Cadena?
Present.
Councilmember Lansburg?
Present.
Councilmember Staller?
Present.
And Mayor Vega?
Present.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so now, we're going to go with the pledge of allegiance and... Let's see, Christine, would you lead us with the pledge of allegiance, please?
Absolutely. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, now at this time, Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public who have submitted an email, left a voicemail, or any hands raised for general public comment for anything not on tonight's agenda?
Nobody is raising their hands, and I don't have a voicemail, but I do have an email I'd like to read.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. To whom it may concern, we are writing this letter as concerned neighbors in desperate need of help. Our street, which is Thomas Street, has gotten more and more dangerous to live on, walk on, and pross on. There have been multiple accidents on this street and instances where people driving on the road have been driving way too fast and lost control of their cars and crashed into cars and homes here. We have small children and elderly family members here who spend their time on the street playing and or walking. And with recent events, we have been too afraid to let them go outside. We, as a community, are asking for help in recognizing these events and calling for action in getting speed bumps to help enforce speed reductions and making cars pass by at a safer rate to help make this a peaceful community again. We, as a community, have noticed that our streets and intersections have received speed bumps over the years. Residing in this community for the years we have been here have been met with no action after each instance this has happened. So we are asking in this letter for our voices to be heard. We do not feel safe. We are only losing our property, luckily, but we don't want change to happen when somebody loses their life from these accidents. Please help us sincerely, the Lopez family. That is all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Hyatt, would you please pass this along and share with Katie in the traffic division to follow up and see about potential process, starting the process for some traffic mitigation using the toolkit that the team has provided?
Yeah, certainly. In fact, email's already been forwarded to Katie and Brent, and the traffic study is actually already commenced for this neighborhood. Council recalls, there was, and actually has been a series of accidents in this neighborhood. And last summer, Councilmember Fernandez hosted a meeting with the neighborhood out of Campbell Park. So through that feedback, we committed to commence the neighborhood traffic calming study in the Campbell Park neighborhood. So we've now started that work. We'll have the results back in several weeks, and then we'll reengage with the neighborhood on what the results show and what some potential traffic calming solutions might look like.
Wonderful. Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Okay, so now, we're going to move on to item G, which is communications from council. So at this time, I'm going to invite our council members to give share their communication for tonight, and we'll start off with Councilmember Lansburg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things tonight, Madam Mayor. At the January 20th meeting of the Woodland-Davis Water Board, we looked at the potential of joining other communities in securing water rights, the proposed Sights Reservoir, which is located in Colusa County. People should know that your water board is always looking for alternative sources of water considering the delicate balance in getting water from our primary source, which is the Sacramento River. The board has asked staff to provide the board with additional information, including the costs and risks involved in the Sights project. But if everything goes as planned and as climate change worsens and California experiences more rain and less snow, then the need for Sights reservoir increases. It will capture water from the Sacramento River when flows are high and store it for times that it would never dry. If everything works out, it should be available as early as 2030. We'll report back to you as we get more information from our staff as well. At the January 26th meeting of the Housing Authority, we got an update on the Housing Authority's five-year plan, which includes a comprehensive strategic plan to modernize low-income housing in the Galano-Bonley Circle area. Those of us who have lived here for a long time know that those homes were built in the 50s, and they're certainly a needed replacement. We were updated on the proposed plan, which fits right in with item H8 in tonight's consent calendar. I know that the Housing Authority is excited to work with the planners to create a neighborhood framework plan for the Armpill-Lemon area. If I'm not mistaken, if this project goes forward, it will be one of the largest projects Woodland has ever seen. And I'll have more to say on that when we get to the consent calendar. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Lansburg. Is Member Garcia-Cadena?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I had the privilege of attending the Council City's New Mayor and Council Members Academy. Over the course of the last two weeks, they were online, and it was Thursday and Friday of last week and Thursday and Friday the week before, and lots of great information. Last year, I was appointed, I think, the week after the academy took place, so I just missed it. So, you know, having been on the council for a year now, it was really great information and very helpful. The other thing is, I wanted to let people know, if they're not aware of it, that our community service Parks and Rec is doing, is holding a Woodland Rights, and this is a way for people in our community to wish senior citizens a happy Valentine's Day. So our community members are encouraged to write a note, or a poem, or draw a picture, and get it dropped off out at the community center before this coming Friday, Friday the 5th, and then it will be, they will be delivered. So I have challenged all of my Facebook friends to do three cards each. I have my cards completed, and I have a few friends who have already completed theirs. So I'd like to encourage everyone in our community to get involved. It's something, you know, young, old, everyone. It's something that everyone can get involved with and bring a little bit of joy to someone else in our community.
That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia-Cadena. Mayor Protem Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Vega. I just want to make a reminder for everyone that we have our final advisory redistricting commission meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 on Zoom. So if anyone has missed any of the other workshops or is interested in participating in the redistricting advisory commission meetings, it will be at 6:00. Also, I want to just emphasize the concerns of the residents on Thomas Street. They feel that the last 20 years, they've endured several accidents in that 500 block. And so I thank city staff for taking the time to address the issues. And Chief Caff met with several residents. There was around 10 residents last Monday, and they're just feeling unheard, and they're, again, fearful of the danger of someone losing their life. And so fortunately, this last weekend, there was a metal fence that prevented the vehicle from entering the residence home. Last time, it was a truck that was also totaled again that prevented it from entering a home. So they just, you know, want to let us know how fearful they are for the safety of the residents in that area. And I want to thank staff for the attempts made, but just kind of want to remind us that they're concerned. Also want to just congratulate Holy Rosary Parish, who will be moving from the Walnut Street, Walnut and Court Street area that they've been for almost over 72 years since 1949. So they will be moving off to California and Cross, and I wish them well. A lot of exciting news, but also a lot of sadness for some of us who have grown up there, lots of memories in that church. So I wish them much success, and it'll be an exciting new venture for the residents of Woodland and those who belong to the parish. And then lastly, I would just like us maybe to take time at maybe the end to share our condolences with the city of Elk Grove and the city of Stockton, who recently lost Officer Lannahan from the city of Elk Grove and a fire captain, Fortuna, from the city of Stockton. And just a reminder of the danger that our public safety officials endure and to their communities. I just hope that we can send our condolences to them and let them know that we share their loss. So that will be it for me. Thank you, Mayor Vega.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Fernandez. Councilmember Staller?
Well, thank you. Not much to report tonight for me, but I would like to acknowledge that traffic behavior has been declining nationally for some time now. Traffic deaths are up nationally. They're up in the state of California. Scofflaw driving seems to be on the increase. It's very concerning to the citizens of this community. I certainly support everything we can do to make our neighborhood safer for people, but nothing would replace better driving habits by the people who drive our streets. And if we can't deal with them one way, we'll have to deal with them with another. But I appreciate strong, effective law enforcement to stop this. Also, we have a new phenomenon of cars that are able to switch on a setting where there's no muffler and these amazingly loud explosions are coming from vehicles going down Main Street in the middle of Woodland or West Street at 1:00 in the morning, and it's very, very disturbing to people and pets. So I can only encourage all of our citizens to be more considerate, to try to confront those who are not being as good neighbors as they need to be. And perhaps a little empathy for our law enforcement, because they can't be everywhere at the same time. Also, perhaps we could adjourn in memory of former Police Chief Witten. He passed away recently after he had a career in law enforcement here, took him right to the top, and then he felt the calling to the ministry and spent the rest of his life, 35 years, as a minister. So I'd like to just make sure we remember our former Police Chief Witten tonight. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Councilmembers Staller. And for myself, so I had the pleasure of representing Woodland at the U.S. Conference of Mayors at their winter conference in DC. At the conference, I had the opportunity to listen to some of the federal programs that are coming down the pike to help support areas of infrastructure, clean water, and broadband, high-speed internet. So I'm really looking forward to working with city manager Mr. Hyatt and also Spencer Brown to look at some of these grants and application periods to make sure we're prepared. And we're at the front of the line to request funding and partner with our county partners to ensure that our community is able to take advantage of all those resources that are coming down. And additionally, just I want to add on to the traffic. You and I too have observed just that a lot of distracted driving and probably a lot of excess speed limits. So just reminding folks to be patient, give a little bit of extra time, and certainly just pay attention on the road. It only takes a second for an accident to happen. I do want to call out our police department. I've noticed an increased presence of some of our motorcycle officers that certainly notice cause folks to slow down or stop depending on the case. So I appreciate that sometimes just having those, that presence out there makes a difference. So I do appreciate that, and I'm thankful that we have that support in our community. So that is going to be it for me. Thank you for that. So Mr. Hyatt, do you have a communication update for us?
I do, yeah. Just two quick updates from me. I do want to echo Mayor Protem Fernandez's advertisement for tomorrow night's workshop for the Advisory Redistricting Commission, 6:00 PM on Zoom. That will be the last of six workshops that the commission has held to seek input from the community on council district boundaries. The commission, then, is scheduled to have a public hearing on February 24th, where they will receive final sort of public feedback regarding the maps that they have been contemplating. And they'll take that final feedback and deliver on to council recommendation for either a single map for your consideration or multiple maps. So nearing the end of that process, do want to encourage folks to engage in that. Also, look out for a survey from the city. We've engaged a consultant to help us develop a new logo for the city of Woodland to launch this into the next 150 years of our community. And so we put together with, put from the subcommittee and community members, a brief survey that will help inform and inspire what that logo will look like. So look out for an email and social media opportunities to link in a quick survey and provide feedback and input to help us envision what the future logo will look like. Real quick on the long range, I do want to call out for the council. We have a council retreat coming up for February 12th. It's a Saturday, all-day session. So I'm working with the mayor, Mayor Protem, to put together a healthy dose of conversation amongst the council and also inviting many of our commissions and board and committees to come join us for various segments of the afternoon to share their perspective on where our priorities as a community and their respective jurisdictional roles will be and use that to help inform the council's priorities moving forward. So looking forward to spending some time on the 12th. We will then take that feedback from the council and I'll agendaize a, probably a March agenda item to have the council solidify the updated goals for the remainder of your two-year goal period. With that, also want to sort of tee up for what will be a traditional budget season that will start in March. We've got a mid-year budget report coming in in March. And then we'll immediately turn around and start to share with you what our budget forecast will look like for not just next year, but the five years ahead of us. And so we'll have some very important budget decisions for the council and the community to weigh in on over the next four to five months. So I look forward to that. So that concludes my remarks this evening. Madam Mayor, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you so much, Sir City Manager. So now I think we're on to move on to the consent calendar, which includes items three through nine, or three through 10, actually. So my colleagues have any items they would like removed for further discussions? Or are any questions on any of these items?
Madam Mayor, I do have a comment on number eight.
Okay, please go ahead.
I briefly addressed it in my opening remarks, but this is a really significant opportunity for our city to really take advantage of programs that could, will completely renovate and change the area of Armfield, East Main, all the way to the Lemon Avenue Public Housing, all the way to the Cannery and all the way to East Street. It's a significant development with the cooperation of state, local, federal, county officials to get this thing moving. I really support the idea of getting, you know, the framework started and looking at different models that might be built out there at some point. But, you know, in looking at, I hope everybody has just looked at the map. I'd like to look at that map and stretch that line that goes down the middle of East Street, or East Main Street, and encapsulate the area that's on the south side of East Main Street, starting at East Street and going down to Thomas Street. You know, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to renovate and refurbish this north side of the East Main Street, but not the south side. Some of those buildings are dilapidated and use of work. So I hope that when we look at this project as a city and staff, that we can bend that boundary a little bit and include the south side of East Main Street. It's just a thought I was having, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stollard.
Okay.
Actually, that was Landsberg.
I'm sorry. I got, I was a little bit, the printed version of the agenda has the different items. So that was Councilmember Landsberg, sorry about that.
Madam Mayor, I'll respectfully move the consent calendar. I certainly think the suggestions offered by Councilmember Landsberg are worthy of consideration.
Second, the agenda, or the counter consent calendar.
Mayor Portem Fernandez, I see your hand raised. Do you have a question?
Yeah, excuse me. I do have a question before we take about. I just wanted to, forgot to ask this on our session. There is a $94,000 fee on item number seven, the state route termination with the Granite Rock Company. I have a question, just if, when that project resumes or if that project resumes, will that money that we're losing in fees be applied to anything in the future if we continue or reuse Granite Rock Company? So there was like a $42,000, I think, fee that was due to the termination. So like, there's a total of $94,000 that we are losing in that termination. So I just wondered if that will be applied at a future date or is just lost due to the termination of the contract?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, happy to address that. So that item is in relation to termination of a contractor with Granite Rock for some work on a contract that they had already commenced. And after they had initiated the work and incurred costs, we approached the contractor to see if they would be willing to negotiate with us to terminate the contract. And the reason we approached them was in working with Caltrans and our consultants, the ultimate interchange improvements there would necessitate a lot of the improvements that we were now moving forward with to essentially be lost cost. And so what we did was we approached the contractor with a request to effectively abandon the current project that will ultimately save us more money than what we were going to settle with them. And so the payment that you referenced, Mayor Portem, is a one-time payment. We will not be able to sort of recoup any of that in the future. But by terminating this contract, we'll actually save more money in the long run.
Right, thank you. I just wanted clarification on that, thank you.
Okay, I didn't see any more hand raised. So there's the motion on the table to approve consent items three through nine. So motion by Councilmember Stollard and, or seconded by, is that right? Okay, seconded by Councilmember Landsberg. So Madam Quirk, would you please call about?
Yes. Mayor Portem Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia-Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Stollard?
Aye.
Mayor Vega?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're on to item I, Reports of the City Manager. And item number 10 is the microtransit update. So Mr. Hyatt, are you going to kick us off?
Yeah, I'll do a very brief intro and then I'll hand it over to Spencer Bowen, our Communications Manager, Policy Analyst, who's been lead for the city in working with Yolo County Transportation District. Over the last six to eight months, we've been engaged with Transit District to explore and ultimately put together a request for proposals to transit providers to implement a new form of transit that would replace a portion of the current fixed route system that Yolo Bus or Yolo County Transportation District provides for us in our community. And it would be a much more flexible and convenient alternative. Many cities across the country, including our neighbor West Sacramento, has already made this transition. And so we have been working very closely with the Transit District to explore what that would look like in the Woodland context. And we're excited to be on the cusp of being ready to release that RFP. And so I'll have Spencer. And then we've also invited Kristin Mazur from Yolo County Transportation District, who's been our counterpart and deeply immersed with us in helping sort of vet what this will look like. She's here as well to help provide additional information and answer any questions you might have.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm going to briefly share my screen here. I'll confirm y'all can see that.
Yes, we can see it.
Great. So as Ken said, this will be a brief presentation to cover, update you at a pretty exciting time in our kind of microtransit journey. The YCTD Board anticipates taking up the draft RFP, the proposed RFP for Operation of Micro Transit. They proposed to celebrate Valentine's Day on February 14th by considering microtransit. So we're in the homestretch here, which is very exciting. This brief presentation will cover just a little bit of a background on current Yolo County microtransit, microtransit in general, how we got where we are, some key things we seek in the future service in time for your feedback and questions. And again, want to recognize and thank Kristin, Senior Planner over at YCTD, for taking time out of her evening to join us. So the first piece I want to highlight is this is kind of one facet of a larger shift, both for the city and for YCTD towards, you know, more sustainable multimodal and accessible transit options. Multi, excuse me, microtransit is one of these things. It's helpful for me to think about other projects such as, you know, bike-friendly improvements and the bike and pedestrian overcrossing here in town as part of a larger shift towards accessible transit, such as this. Yolo County actually already offers some limited microtransit. It's branded as Your Ride, which stands for Yolo Urban Rural Ride. And that is operated by YCTD in the communities of Knights Landing and the Winters area. You also may have heard that, you know, very recently, I believe, in spring 2021, YCTD accepted the recommendations of the Yolo Go study, which was a study to determine how Yolo Bus Transit Services can better serve the Yolo County community. A lot of changes were recommended in this, the pertinent ones for us. As among other changes, Yolo Go recommended discontinuing Knights Landing Route 216 and replacing that with microtransit longer term. Doing something similar in Winters with Route 220. And most top of mind for us here in Woodland, discontinuing local routes 210 and 214 in Woodland and replacing those with microtransit service now, which obviously brings us to the need for, you know, a different and more accessible Yolo County option for microtransit. We've been hard at work at this for a while and, you know, want to thank our partners at YCTD for working hand in glove and allowing the city to kind of sit in on a lot of these meetings to deliver a good product. The first thing we did is we had a lot of conversations with policy experts in other jurisdictions about microtransit. And, you know, this is really key because microtransit or point-to-point on-demand public transit is still a relatively new model here in the United States. It's only been popularized in the last four to five years. So we really wanted to learn, you know, kind of what was out there, what's working and what isn't, and all the different models out. And just as way of illustration, this is a map of various communities we talked to throughout this process. And I'd be happy to dive into some of the things we learned and how different some of these models are should council be interested. The second thing we did is we decided to issue a formal request for information, an RFI, to kind of see really what's out there and what people can provide. And we enjoyed a really strong response. We hosted nine presentations from various technology companies and transit companies that responded to the RFI. And this, in my mind, proved really beneficial to us because it helped, yes, shape what we want to really ask after in the RFP, but also more broadly, think about where the city and where Yolo County Transportation District really fit in as a piece of larger sort of transit solutions. And by way of, you know, illustration, one thing you might see or read is that, you know, our RFP is looking for microtransit operation, actually helping us deploy rides and that sort of thing. It's not asking after another term you might see in this space, which is mobility as a service, which is something we remain really interested in. It's often shortened to M-A-A-S or MAS. And I just bring that up because what that means is basically these services, such as the transit app on your phone, that are kind of a one-place clearinghouse for transit. You pull it up and it shows all of the options, whether it be fixed route, microtransit, or even shared things such as bike shares and scooters. That is not what this RFP is about that we're focused on tonight. But I want to assure council that this is something that the county and even the greater Sacramento area is interested in, super engaged in conversation. And Kristin's been very helpful convening a couple of early conversations, both here in the county and throughout the greater Sacramento region, to make sure we stay on top of those type of solutions too. It's kind of a broader thing that would be really easy for residents here in Woodland and in other communities. Finally, as you've heard, right, we're drafting this RFP for microtransit operations. And obviously, this eventual service would be compatible with the future solutions region-wide. And want to encourage council or community members, should they want to review a version of the RFP that's not final, but shows which direction we're going in, that is attached to this evening's agenda. And at the end of this, if council members or any folks have questions or comments on that document, we'd be happy to talk about it further. Finally, I just want to bring up, you know, a couple of key things that we hope this service will provide. First, I want to bring attention to YCTD's recently finalized district-wide goals for microtransit. There are seven of them. They are also in that draft RFP document. They are great. I want to bring up a couple of things we feel the city has really been pushing for, in concert, of course, with the county in this process. The first will be a service that's accessible and equitable. You know, we want to make sure that this public transit is useful and usable to everybody in our community. Things to think about on this front are, how do we make sure it's accessible to unbanked folks or folks who want to pay with cash? How do we make sure people can order a ride on their phone by calling, not just on their smartphone in an app? And of course, here in Woodland, multilingual and accessible cultural options. Second, another thing we're really keen on is partnering on promotion and marketing. What I mean by this is both a partner that will really help us reach out to our community, make sure people are aware of what we hope will be just this awesome and flexible service, as well as a platform that allows us to promote certain things in our community. Think about, you know, messaging or discounts to get downtown on First Friday to attend a special event or even attend a local polling place on Election Day. Finally, a keen focus on our youth and senior communities. We know from some of our partner jurisdictions and colleagues in the space that where they've enjoyed a lot of success, although many people ride these types of services, are among kids and seniors. We want to particularly focus on kids who might not have access to other transportation options. And this will provide a really valuable piece of getting around town, whether it's to a sports practice or something else, as well as seniors who may, you know, really rely on public transportation. We want a service that's going to both be easy for them to use and also, again, partner with the city and YCTD to make sure folks feel really comfortable using whatever interface we land on. With that, I will take a pause in the conversation, welcome your questions and comments, and remind you that Kristin is here as well with a little bit more expert planning eye as well.
Thank you, Spencer. And Kristin, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I have a very basic question. Can you describe to me in very simple terms, I mean, what is microtransit? Is it a car? I mean, is it a self-driven something or other? Tell me simply, what is it?
I think that's a great question. I'll take a stab, Kristin. If I'm not accurate, go ahead and correct me. What we're envisioning is a flexible, point-to-point, on-demand, likely small bus or shuttle service. So what you can picture is an operation somewhat like a shared ride on-demand, like a Uber pool. But this would be a public service that would operate not out of a private car, but out of a public van or shuttle. And the easiest example for many in our community is if they've gone to West SAC and seen West SAC's partnership with the company via. That's a fair representation about how many of these services work. Kristin, does that sound right?
Yeah, and I think another key component is that the ride can be booked on a smartphone, same way Uber can. But like Spencer said, we want to make sure that all people, including those who don't have smartphones, can do it. But that's a convenience that appeals to a lot of people.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you for that. All right, I'll open up. I see Mayor Portem Fernandez, hand raised?
Thank you, Mayor Vega. And Spencer, thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. My first one is on the microtransit that exists in Knights Landing and Winters. If I'm correct, the report says that it's Monday through Friday and Sunday from 8:30 to 5:30. And then the Winters El Rio Via is from Monday through Saturday from 8:30 to 4:30. So my question is, how would, how would microtransit work in a community the size of Woodland? And how would someone who is working or a student have accessibility to the microtransit if it runs in those similar hours? Or would it expand in the timeframe? So 8:30 to 5:30 would not work for someone who has to be in school at 8:00 or has to be at work at 8:00 and doesn't get off until 6:00 or 7:00. So just kind of, how does it work in a community? And how does it provide for residents who may use it for other than leisure purposes?
Yeah, certainly. Great question. Again, I think I'll take a broad stab and then hand it off to Kristin. We certainly want, right, the service will be designed to serve those folks as well, whether it's jobs or heading downtown for dinner. We realize people have public transit needs outside the hours of 8:30 to 5:30. So that's part of the model. Of course, we're looking for a provider who will deliver service that can be efficient that can be efficient and cost-effective over the most amount of availability possible. One thing that the RFP is going to call out and that I think, I think it's fair to say we'll be searching for with whoever we partner with is really keen and smart analysis about kind of modeling and transit planning to help us understand really how many vehicles we need for what set of time to serve our goals. One of those goals being, right, we need something that, that works for folks who need to ride at 6:30 or 7:00 PM as well. So that's top of mind for us. And Kristin, if you have anything to add, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just reiterate that last point especially is that part of the RFP is getting a technology platform to make microtransit possible, but we're also seeking planning assistance. And we will be coming back, working with Spencer, working with you all and conceiving to set a lot of these policy parameters. Winters and Knights Landing chose those hours because it was similar to the fixed routes it replaced, but you may choose to want to prioritize different things.
Okay, I have one more question. My other question would be, how does this? Is it similar to the community care car that we currently have for seniors who can request a ride? And then my second, I guess my third question is, how does that impact or affect workers who provide Uber or Lyft or pay-for-service? Is that going to impact those positions and those people who are providing a similar service where you call and you have someone to pick you up where you're at? So just kind of wondering.
Yeah, you know, I'll tackle the second one first, which is that the, the model for, for these workers would be somewhat different in that this would not be kind of a log-in, log-out model, much like Uber, Lyft, where you sort of go on the clock and go off the clock. It would be a little closer to what we think of as, as a public transit model where folks are going to be employees with, with set hours and, and working directly with YCTD. So we're confident it will serve a different sort of workforce purpose, if that's what you're getting after for drivers in this case. And that's obviously something we're focused on, as everyone is right now, making sure we, we get that part figured out. On the community care car, you know, that, that is, I think, something we anticipate sort of coexisting. They are somewhat similar in the on-demand aspect, where you, where you call and you get a ride. You know, this service would be tailored and marketed towards a wider array of folks in the community care car. But certainly, you know, this, this doesn't mean that, that that's going away or, or taken over, or that that doesn't serve a really important purpose for folks in our community. Kristin?
I, I think you answered that very well. I agree with everything you said.
Does that answer your question, Vicki?
Thank you for your, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Fernandez. So Councilmember Garcia-Cadena?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I think my, my question is similar to Mayor Protem Fernandez's. I was just wondering, have other jurisdictions who have implemented these microtransit programs, have they seen a decline in their for-profit rideshare programs like Uber or Lyft? You know, would this, would people, I mean, I guess this would be an alternative to Uber or Lyft? So I'm just wondering if they've seen a decline in, in, in those programs or if that's, you have stats on that?
That's a great question. I think it is, I think what I'll say is it's really tough to make kind of like an overarching assessment of that because of how different some of these services are. For example, some communities are, are like us, right? Or like we anticipate being, which is sort of a full umbrella over a community where there's this additional public on-demand shuttle operating. Some communities are implementing this between different zones, if that makes sense. You know, we're, we're not anticipating doing that here, but some folks are saying, hey, we got an airport and a sports stadium out here in downtown over here. You can do microtransit between those, but if you're not in those zones, no good for you. Some folks are doing it basically as a last-mile solution if they're a commuter-heavy community, sort of supplementing Uber and Lyft. What I have heard from other folks, you know, as I said, we had a lot of conversations with other communities is, is that this is not sort of carving out a lot of stuff from Uber and Lyft. It's serving a slightly different purpose and probably a slightly different population because this is a publicly subsidized version of that, for example, as well as something that, you know, for our purposes, will, will not go everywhere that an Uber or Lyft could go. I think for me, the most helpful way to think about what our, you know, awesome future service will be is adding another offering for folks that will complement existing offerings, that can bring them to the fixed route stop of their choosing, that can do some things perhaps a little quicker and differently and more reliably than private operators such as an Uber or Lyft. And then it can also can provide some access to some communities who, who may not, it may not be as easier to call an Uber or Lyft, such as an elderly person or, for example, you know, a 14-year-old who doesn't have access to another way to get around. Kristin, do you have anything to add?
I would just agree that I think it, it kind of serves a separate market and it's just adding to the family of transportation services. Whereas someone who could afford an Uber and wants to get there in five minutes would probably use that service. Someone who needs a lower fare but, and can afford to wait 30 minutes might use the Yolo Bus microtransit. But I think it'll just add even more options for people without probably taking away anything that they're currently using.
Yeah, and Kenny, I don't, oh, go ahead, sorry.
So just one more question. So if, say, a 14-year-old wants to utilize the, the microtransit as a way to get to school, would there be a way for them or their parents to set it up? So it's a reoccurring Monday through Friday? They're getting picked up at a certain location and, and, or would they have to call every day to set this up?
It's an excellent question. I think it's a little tough to say before we select a vendor. However, I'll just say, given our, our conversations with folks already, that's something that really appeals to me and the other city staff involved with this is the ability to call something right away, you know, on your phone, hey, I need something now. Or the, a vendor that also offers the ability to pre-schedule rides, such as you described. We've talked to other folks who've found that to be super useful. As you said, again, as I kind of hinted in the PowerPoint, younger folks and older folks especially, that's a helpful option. And just to piggyback and again, not to get too far in the weeds, but on your last question, right, that this is also, you know, an Uber or Lyft is a great flexible option. It's often one driver and one passenger. If, if we can provide something that's publicly subsidized, that will be a shared ride and that is accessible to a different, you know, set that obviously achieves some of councils and, you know, Woodland's Climate Action Plan goals, as well as some of our equity goals around accessibility of public services.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullard, did you, do you have a question or comment?
No. Well, I will have a comment. As you know, I represent our city at the Yolo County Transit District Board. I'm the vice chair currently. We've been working on this a long time. West SAC was the first in the entire country to do it. And their service is about four years old now. It's wildly well-received by the citizens. And there's so many wonderful stories, including a woman who wasn't ever, ever able to buy ice cream because she couldn't get home soon enough. It'd melt on the bus. So now that they have VIA, she can, she can buy ice cream at the grocery store and expect to get home in time to put it in the freezer. So it, I would say, I really appreciate the comments that this is, is a hybrid, so we say. I mean, it's the same thing between taxi cabs and buses. You know, you can take one or the other, but people pay, pay cabs sometimes for expediency and they don't care about the cost, even though it's many times more expensive than a bus. Well, whereas Uber will take you basically from where you are to where, exactly where you want to go. The VIA system will often require that you meet them at the corner, the nearest cross street. So it isn't exactly right in front of your house necessarily unless... There's also the issue of paratransit. You know, we actually provide service for people who have special needs. And I've been advocating, well, why don't we try to weave them into this new system? So it's like mainstreaming people with handicaps so that they can enjoy this service like other people. But it means the equipment has to be designed to accommodate their needs too. So there's a lot of opportunities here. And so instead of having empty buses roaming around our town on fixed routes where servicing only people immediately close, we now have an option to get to everyone. The other thing is, I, for example, I took an Uber today from Arden Way to Woodland because I had a car repair that was going to hold over to another night. I had to get home. Our system will not go outside of the city. In other words, it'll take you to a point where you connect with a bus. The buses will go between cities, not, not this service. Whereas Uber and Lyft will obviously go anywhere you want to go, airport or whatever. So anyway, I'm grateful, I'm so grateful to be this far along. I think Spencer, thank you, and Kristin, thank you. You've done a great job looking at options all across the country. But this is a pioneering effort. I don't, I doubt if there's 20 of these in place at this time in the entire country. West SAC was first, and then I think someplace in Delaware was second. And it's clearly the wave of the future. So happy for Woodland to be at this stage. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Sullard. No, and I'll just time in to say that it sounds like this is a great delivery system, transport system that's going to be flexible and will be able to adjust to meet the needs of the community. Something that I'll encourage in this process to look at is just opportunities to partner with the schools for after connecting students that have a gap between after-school and when their parents get home from work. So my understanding that sometimes the transportation is, is a barrier between schools and the YMCA or even the Community Services Department. So that'd just be a wonderful way to support working families that are struggling with after-school care. So looking forward to, to hearing more on that. And I think for, for tonight, this, this is just an informational item. No, no action to take on council.
Yeah, correct. And I just encourage council members, if they have notes or suggestions beyond what was mentioned tonight, to shoot me an email the next week or so so we can incorporate those into our, a draft RFP that will be going before the YCTD Board on February 14th.
Wonderful. Sounds like we all need to take a field trip out to West SAC and, and jump on the microtransit out there, so.
I have to tell you, they have Mercedes. I think they're 15-passenger vehicles, Mercedes leather seats, you know? I don't know that we're going to be quite that fancy here in Woodland. We're actually, West Sacramento kind of did theirs on their own. We are in Woodland trying to help formulate a template that will be used throughout the district so that other cities can adopt it where it's appropriate. You know, Davis has so many thousands of students. Buses make a lot of sense in the neighborhood. So one size doesn't fit all. But clearly, Winters and Knights Landing will be tracking as they evolve into the future with the model that Woodland is working with YCTD staff to develop. So stay tuned.
Right, wonderful. Spencer and Kristin, thank you so much. Really appreciate the update. Again, looking forward to seeing this come into fruition.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so now we're on to the next item, which is a 2020 census data update. So it's like, Spencer, you're gonna present that tonight?
It's a twofer.
Correct, yeah. Ken, do you have a tasteful intros as I bring up a new PowerPoint?
Yeah, if you want me to fill a little bit of time while you're pulling that one up. Yeah, this too is just an informational item from the council and inspired by our mayor who made a comment, you know, about, hey, it'd be great for the council to receive a kind of an overview of what the, you know, 2020 federal census data looks like for Woodland. And, you know, how do we evolve as a community since the last census? And what kind of data can we pull out of this census that might help inform council decisions and policies moving forward? So I tasked Spencer with delving into the data and trying to pull out some of the highlights of, of what the, the data shows for us. So this is simply an introductory to what the 2020 census data reveals for us. And welcome, you know, further council questions and inquiry around how can we use this census data to help inform decisions as we move forward here in our community? So it looks like Spencer's got the PowerPoint up, so I'll hand it right over to you.
Yeah, so good evening once again, council. Brief update here, I'm going to start with a little bit of background on the census itself. I think it's something we talk about a lot, but don't always understand the ins and outs. Then I'll dive into what the data says about Woodland, including population, occupancy and housing, and race and ethnicity. Finally, I'll conclude with some thoughts about what we might take away from this and an opportunity for your questions and feedback and where we should continue using our efforts going forward with US Census data. The first question is, so what is the census? You know, the Constitution calls for a, what it calls national enumeration once every decade. This count supplies the, the numbers that inform our democratic representation from the Woodland City Council to the US House of Representatives. However, when we say the census, we usually talk about this once every 10-years thing, which is usually called the decennial census, which is the literal count of everyone. There's also the US Census Bureau housed in the Department of Commerce, which produces and analyzes all kinds of great data. And those terms are, it can be confusing because the census is sometimes used interchangeably. I will return at the end to talk just briefly about what the Census Bureau is up to and how it might be useful to Woodland. Now, a, a count of everyone in the nation provides a lot of opportunities and a lot of challenges to the United States and, and here in Woodland. You know, the first thing to say is, is the census, the decennial census, remains our best and most comprehensive data source and count of everyone here. Early analysis of how the 2020 census did confirmed that it was, once again, a remarkably good and accurate count. But I do want to briefly highlight just some fundamental challenges to, to doing this. So we keep it in mind and so that we know this can be both a super valuable and also there are some flaws, as you might imagine, to counting every single person in the United States. One of the things we see over and over is our chronic, chronic undercounts of certain populations. You'll see if you go every 10 years, there'll be efforts to reach quote-unquote "hard-to-count" populations. And things that tend to be associated with being hard-to-count include, but are not limited to, a large population of folks who live in rental housing, a large population of folks who do not speak English, live in poverty, and many more. The specific reasons for a lot of these factors kind of vary. They can include stuff like lack of trust of institutions, transience, cognitive burden or stress, and, and much more. But I think the important thing to take away is a lot of those communities that I just mentioned or that might overlap with what I just mentioned share a history of, of lack of institutional resources in our country. And we should kind of remain mindful that it's really important, like the importance of the census and counting these people is if we don't do it well, it, it funds some vicious cycles. And by that, I mean that many of the populations that tend to be undercounted are the very same groups that benefit most from federal programs that allocate money based on population that's determined in the census. You can think of SNAP or food stamps, Medicaid, CHIP, all that kind of good stuff. A, a quick highlight just to, just to illustrate the point is that an estimated one in 10 young children, children zero to five, were completely missed in the 2010 census, even though this is our, our biggest effort to, to count everyone. Kids zero to five are more than twice as likely to be missed as the next closest age group. All that just to illustrate, you know, why do we even bring this up? It's super important for the city and for city council, every 10 years when this comes up, to engage with and support what are often called complete count efforts and to do our part to make sure everyone in our community is represented and counted. We're often, at least recently, very lucky here in California that the state has taken a leadership role in funding these efforts as well. Now, there were some, some unique challenges in 2020 to conducting the census that I also want to bring up just, just for reference and to put ourselves kind of in, in the mindset of conducting this count in 2020. The first is that the census was actually available online for the first time in addition to via phone and on a piece of paper. It's unclear if this boosted participation or decreased it. There, there are arguments for both, and it'll take a while to suss that out. But it's certainly something that many have argued persuasively might have been confusing and off-putting to some folks. Compared to past decennial censuses, the 2021 was, was funded at a lower level from the federal government. Once again, we were somewhat lucky here in California. And there were other states that sort of backfilled that gap with state funding to fund all of the outreach and counting and promotion of this effort that's, that is important to get a complete count. You may remember there was a citizenship question, discussion that didn't end up on the census. This is a long discussion, but there, there's a lot of really convincing scholarship that even the possibility of this question being on the census, even though it didn't get there, might have depressed turnout among certain populations. And finally, you know, the ongoing COVID pandemic certainly didn't make it easier to count everyone, especially when, for especially when, for example, folks who don't answer right away, people go to their doors and knock on the doors, right? Before the advent of vaccines and stuff, this was a pretty hard proposition for census counters. So with all that being said, and now that we're situated in 2020 frame of mind, I want to remind you that the early analysis shows that this count is still pretty good. Let's dive into what the data says about Woodland, and I'm happy to talk about any of these further. This is sort of a summary. The first will be, this is just a raw count of population. The orange bars are the 2020, most recent numbers. The blue represents 2010, the last time we did this. Population in Woodland grew by almost exactly 10%. About 5,500 folks added. This represented roughly 36% of Yolo County's growth during the same period, which slightly outstripped our countywide population share as of 2020. In 2020, Woodland represents about 28% of Yolo County residents. That's just a raw count of who's here. Next, with the same graph setup, once again, orange representing 2020, this is a count of housing units in communities. Woodland bumped up to over 21,000 housing units. This was an increase that almost kept pace with our population increase. It was a housing unit increase of 9.3% of about 1,800 units. Kind of remarkably, once again, this represented about 36% of the county's share of housing unit growth. And once again, that outstrips our resident share here in Yolo County. And consistent with local and statewide trends, vacancy rates are declining or places are more full. In 2010, we had 94.5% of our housing units filled, and in 2020, that had inched its way up to about 97%. So once again, this is consistent with something we're seeing throughout the state of California. Next, I want to mention identity. First, as was mentioned in the staff report, the census, for some people somewhat confusingly, asks two different questions about this. They first ask a question that asks if the respondent is of Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin. The person then, as you can see, answers no or yes and clarifies what that is. Then in a separate question, they ask about race. And there's probably a longer discussion about if this is the right way to do it, but this is how the data is formulated at this point. And although I'm very happy to dig into the numbers of some of this other stuff, considering Woodland's population, the most interesting and probably pertinent summary number is if folks did indeed identify as Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish in origin, or did not. So that's what I've chosen to focus on this evening. This is a share in 2010. The darker blue is Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish origin. You'll see that it's about 47.5% of Woodland residents, 26,289. Basically, Woodland was super diverse and had a big Latino population in 2010, and not much changed, if anything grew a little bit in 2020. You'll see that that share has crept up a little bit. About half of the residents identify as Hispanic, Latino, or Spanish in origin. Somewhat interestingly, the numbers actually show that this growth in population, as you can see that the raw growth is about 3,500 people. The census shows that this is entirely among 18 and older Latino folks or adult folks. That doesn't necessarily mean there aren't more kids, as we remember that the census tends to do a not very good job, honestly, of counting really young children in particular. But it's an interesting data quirk to look at. Finally, an attempt at summarizing this is, Woodland has grown substantially. Woodland was a place with a vibrant and large Hispanic, Latino, and Spanish origin population that only grew in the past 10 years. And considering where California is in our housing crisis, Woodland is frankly leading the way in housing production, and still has, although that's a small vacancy rate, a vacancy rate that indicates a little bit of a healthier housing market than some of our nearby jurisdictions. Finally, as I mentioned, the Census Bureau also does a lot of other stuff, and I want to draw your attention to the American Community Survey, known as the ACS, and this was formerly called the Long Form Census. As the name implies, this is not a full census, but it's an every-two-year survey that estimates with very high precision a lot of very interesting stuff about communities, including Woodland. The Bureau's own materials, and this is a quote, say that the ACS is the premier source for detailed population and housing information about our nation. What that means in practice is that the ACS asks about more stuff and gives us richer data. So I want to walk you through just a sampling of things that are included in this survey. They include age and sex, languages spoken, income, poverty, transit and commuting, including, for example, that Woodlanders tend to spend a little less time commuting to jobs than the statewide average, which is actually an argument in favor of microtransit, just to dovetail that, employment numbers, education, and much more. And I bring this up as hopefully a jumping-off point and a discussion point, that there's a lot out there that the Census Bureau does. As I mentioned at the beginning, we tend to think about the every-10-years count and filling out our thing, and the numbers that inform, for example, the current redistricting effort here for our city council districts. But the Census Bureau itself does a lot of really cool stuff, and I am anxious and curious to hear how council wants to proceed, if they have recommendations, as Woodland trends towards being an even more data-informed and policy-analysis-driven city. So at that time, I will conclude my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Spencer, thank you so much. This is wonderful. Going to refer back to this recording, and you did a really good overview of the background of the census. Thank you for that. I have some comments, but I'll open it up to my colleagues for comments or questions for Spencer. No, everybody's quiet? All right. So for me, Spencer, I'm really interested, first of all, thank you for doing this. It was at my request, and I appreciate you taking time to do that. Really interested in ensuring that we use all the data from the ACS and to really look at how we're serving our community. We have a rich, diverse community that has grown over time, and really using the data that's available to ensure that we're reaching all community members. I've seen some maps that are GIS-created, that we can narrow in to identify where community members live, and really get sophisticated in the way we target outreach to these community members, and really use that data to measure our success in reaching diverse community members. Just thinking about, Christine, this is something that we've talked about around the Community Services Department and how we're serving the community. So being able to leverage this data to look at our enrollment and our catchment rates for community members, if you will. So this is just to start. I'm looking forward to, again, using this information and those maps that target some of the disadvantaged communities or neighborhoods within our city, and really ensure that they're represented and that we are informed about their needs and we address them. So I'm excited to have this be the first, but certainly not the last, conversation around the makeup of our community. So, all right. Councilmember Sullard?
I want to express appreciation for the report also. I was very happy to see that over the 10-year period, Woodland grew 10%. This is consistent with what some of, I came to Woodland when it was fewer, less than 20,000 people. Some of you were here when it was even less people than that, Rich, perhaps Nikki. But in any event, Woodland has always benefited from gradual growth. Even though it's substantial over time, we've never had a runaway growth. You can't compare us to a Roseville, for example. And I think that's to our benefit. It's allowed us to retain our characters, our community, absorb population growth, and basically maintain our stability. So I find that a very affirming information, and I'm happy that this decade has been similar to those before in terms of the gradual nature of our growth. Despite all the new houses, we've still stayed 1% a year for 10 years.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullard. And I think I neglected to ask for a public comment on the previous item, and for this item, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No.
None? Okay. All right. So again, this is informational only for tonight. Thank you again, Spencer. Appreciate you leading this presentation.
Correct. Happy to do it. And if folks have, just want to leave council, if you have specific things you're curious about, specific questions you might want to know about Woodland or what's changed, just shoot me a note. And if you want to do it yourself, it's data.census.gov. You can play around. So happy to be here.
All right. Thank you. So then that takes us to the final item, which is adjournment. And I know we had some memorial adjournments discussed during our council report out, so I just want to open it up to Councilmember Sullard and Mayor Proctor Fernandez, if you wanted to kind of remind us of those memorial adjournments.
I'd defer to Rich Landsberg, if he cared to speak about Chief Whitton. He probably served under him.
I did. I worked with him and for him. One of the most kindest gentlemen you'll ever meet in your life, who not only said the right things, but he did the right things, led by example. There's been nobody like him since. He's one of a kind and truly a man's man, and a man of the world who served his community, not only in Woodland but in the pastoral community for over 30 years. Can't believe how kind that man was. Always had a good word to say about everybody. I never saw him, well, I did see him upset one time. I think it was in me. Anyway, a good man. So yes, thank you for bringing Jerry out.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Rich. Mayor Proctor Fernandez? Anything?
I just mentioned Officer Lenahan from the department in Elk Grove, who tragically died on his way to work, hit by a drunk driver. So just a reminder, the dangers of drinking and driving a DUI vehicle tragically ended his life. And again, from what I've heard on the news, a very compassionate and selfless individual who served the community of Elk Grove, I believe it's the first officer that they've lost. And the other tragically died in Stockton, was a fire captain for the city of Stockton, and was doing his job and was unfortunately shot by a suspect with a gun while putting out a fire. So again, another from the news, a very compassionate and caring individual who gave a lot to his community. So would just like us to remember their families and their communities that they served and that they loved, and to remind us the danger that all officers put every time they put on a uniform are kind of putting their life on the line for us. So thank you to them, and thank you for their families have suffered a great loss. So thank you for thinking of them and keeping them in our prayers.
Thank you, Mayor Proctor Fernandez. And with that, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Good evening, everybody.
Good night. Thank you all.